Ready? We'll call a meeting to order. Roll call.
Okay, Mayor Westergaard.
Yep.
Boltman.
Yep.
Reese.
Yes.
Huss.
Here.
Stankem.
Here.
Cleveland.
Here.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay, no public forum consent agenda. Any additions or corrections?
Uh, no changes.
Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Boltman.
Yes.
Stankem.
Yes.
Huss.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Okay.
You want to check with Stu?
Stu, have you got something you want to bring up?
Was it snowmobile ordinance time?
Oh.
Not yet.
Yeah. But if that's what you're here for, we'll wait till then.
Sure.
Okay, well, open the public hearing regarding the budget. Any input from the public?
No.
Imagine that.
You have any input out there?
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Need a motion to approve the 2015-16 budget?
I just only have one comment, and that's that, uh, Rudy's tax funding is, does not show up in here then. We, the amount that we receive would be more than, than what is budgeted.
And we'll get more money with the 10% gas tax?
Yeah, it ends up being about $20,000.
Ah, yeah.
Um, so the, uh, that 10, you know, we, we get right around 107,000 or something like that. And now we get about $20,000 more.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the budget?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Okay, Stankem.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Boltman.
Mm-hmm.
Huss.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
Okay, now we're ready for Lori Gilbert.
And I'd like to introduce to you Carla Jenny. She is, uh, uh, training to learn all that there is about housing. From what I understand, you are interested in a little bit more information on the Down Payment Assistance Program. The Down Payment Assistance Program, uh, has evolved in the last few years, uh, to be a little bit of a different animal, but it's a pretty good one. Um, Region 12, there, there's two ways the cities can look at applying for the Down Payment Assistance Fund. As a grant for the city by itself for five to 10 projects. Or you can, uh, jump onboard with Region 12's application. The last couple times, Region 12 has applied for a program inviting cities to participate. The cities can decide how many projects, maximum number of projects that they want to commit to. And then, um, it's first come, first served. For example, last year, our application was with, uh, 10 communities for 12 projects. The different communities, some said they wanted to only commit to one, some said they wanted to commit to two, five, or even as many as 10. Um, the only matching funds that they have to pay are for those projects that are completed in their community. The grant is up to 37,500. Um, the down payment is calculated by a formula that IFA devises. So it's a minimum down payment of $1,000. Uh, this last program, I think the maximum down payment has been as much as $18,000. Along with this down payment program is also a re-
Keep going.
Is also a rehabilitation program. Because we have to make sure those houses meet the Iowa minimum rehab standards. This program is more geared to those houses that are valued at 50,000 to 70,000 or 80,000 dollars. The after rehab value of those houses cannot exceed 110,000 dollars. So any questions so far? Around the lake, that might be a little tough.
That's a little tougher on the, it'd be in town.
But, but in, in, in the town, or whatever, provides the opportunity for first-time homebuyer, uh, young families to come in. The definition of a first-time homebuyer is on the second page where it can be somebody that has not owned a home for three years, a displaced homemaker, um, that is just recently divorced, may or may not have children. Um, and they've added a new status, veterans. Veterans do not have to, can, uh, you know, could be qualified as a first-time homebuyer, even if they had owned a home as recently as a year ago. They still have to be income-qualified. So as you can see on the first page, the chart for the income qualifications are, for Sack County, a family of four would be 47,750 dollars. We do income verification. We test their income for the next 12 months. So it's not the past income, it's, it's the, what are they making, or what is the potential, what they're going to make in the next year. Uh, they have to be able to secure conventional financing, or if the bank in town will, banks in town will provide, uh, in-house financing with a fixed interest rate for at least 15 years. No balloons. But, um, so say that, uh, we are asking $2,500 per project completed in the communities. So again, if the city of Lakeview wished to apply for a grant on their own, we can do that. Or if they want to say, let's do, let's jump on Region 12's application for five projects, up to five projects. And you end up only having two, that's, you only pay for two projects. The, uh, application period is March and April, March or April. We haven't given a timeline yet of when those applications are due. By the time we do, I don't know, Scott, if you remember, some of those, those rehab applic-, uh, programs that we had earlier, you know, at once we get the program, it takes two or three months to set up. So you could look at, most likely that if you committed to any match, it would not be in until next fiscal year. What else can I tell you?
So if you make a commitment to, like, let's say, five homes, what's the timeframe then, again, for, they must be completed? Is there a certain timeframe, or is the?
We would be working, if, if successful, we, we can't be guaranteed this, but we have been pretty successful. If successful, it would be from, uh, July of 2015 through, uh, the next two years. Hopefully, we would get done with it within a year.
Following two, so it would take-
So two years.
So 2015, July 2015?
So you'd have fiscal year 2016 and '17.
Okay.
Is this like, if somebody wants to buy a house and they qualified for this, what if they qualify for some other stuff? Does that, is that okay, or not okay, or?
Well, uh, like what other stuff?
Well, I don't know, there's always, it seems like there's a program for this and a program for that. You know, if you know how to look through the book, I'm assuming there's-
Right.
Many ways they can get money.
Um, we've worked in combination with banks who have had, uh, FHLB, Federal Home Loan Bank, grants for homebuyers that get a loan through their own bank. And, uh, you know, their grants are anywhere from 2,000 to 5,000. What that does is just, uh, decrease, decrease our amount of grant. And another thing, see what, say that they're going to get, if, if we look at it, even before we do the Down Payment Assistance, we do an inspection of the house that they choose. And, uh, then then we get an inspection list and an approximate cost. And let's just say that house needs $20,000. Well, we know our maximum amount of grant is only going to be, um, 37,500. So we have to make sure that we have enough funds reserved for those repairs and the down payment. We also included in that, uh, is 2,000 we reserve for RADON. We are required to do RADON testing for each of the houses that we assist.
Based, based on what you just said, what does this, 24,999 mean on page two?
24,999 is the maximum you can do for a house built pre-1978 before, uh, without, uh, having to do lead abatement, lead-based paint abatement. So the state has decided that the maximum regular cost of, of rehab would, cannot exceed 24,999. So it doesn't kick it into that abatement. Because if, if you're aware, if you end up doing, uh, lead abatement to a house, it costs three times more than if you just work with the safe work practices that we require contractors to do. We work with the homeowner, and the home, the homebuyer also has to take eight hours of counseling courses. They have to be able to provide 500 dollars of their own funds. Um, they have to be able to secure financing with the bank with a fixed interest rate for a minimum of 15 years. So we work with that homebuyer, we provide the homebuyer, uh, counseling courses. And then, once the closing is done, then we set up a time, and once the homebuyer gets settled in, they're now homeowner, then we work with them on procuring bids for the rehab, for the rehabilitation. Hopefully putting local contractors to work.
So how do you determine the amount of the Down Payment Assistance?
Um, there's two factors. There's one form that I, that we plug in the numbers, and IFA says, okay, you can provide 1,000 to, let's just say, 15,000 for down payment. But the other factor is, is how much that inspection estimate is for the rehabilitation cost. So, depending on, on, you know, how many repairs it needs. When we look at a house to do repairs, we look at the roof, the windows, the siding, the plumbing, the electrical. We want to make sure that house is, is, um, up to par, safe, decent, energy efficient.
So does it oftentimes happen that you hit the maximum amount between the, the down payment?
Yeah. We have had one homeowner that actually, uh, needed a little bit of money, so they took out a small loan. But, uh, we try to prevent that because they don't need another loan on top of their new mortgage, so.
I see you got the, the after rehab, cannot exceed 110,000. But then it could go 154, period 201, what's that mean? What, what causes that?
Had, had, had at some point decided, at first they were going to say, at first they were trying to say that it could not exceed 95% of the average sale price in that county. I can't remember what Sack County was, but in Green County, it was 43,000.
Oh, wow.
And, and that was after rehab value. There was no way. So, uh, people across the state pretty much, uh, raised an uproar. And, uh, and so they did get it up to 110,000. And it's, it's been working well in Carroll, hasn't it? And, and mainly Carroll, uh, um, but Guthrie County, they're a little bit higher because they're right by Des Moines. They're-
Okay.
Guthrie, uh, Guthrie rates and incomes are, are right in line with Dallas County or Polk County.
So if we do this, what kind of a timetable is all this?
Um, I would, I would need by, at the latest, by, uh, I, we haven't heard when they're going to do it, but I would hope that if you can't, if, if you wish to hold off until next meeting, that I at least know. But you have two meetings in a month?
Yes.
That I would at least have a resolution by next meeting so that we could include you, whether you want to do one on your own, or just join in with Region 12's. Um, that is the timeline. I'm sure that once they put out the application, or the availability of the application, um, it's going to be a short term. They want it to be a short turnaround. So I'm sure that the application will be due sometime in April. And then, uh, and then, uh, probably here back in, I would say, June. And then that, thus we're into the next, close to the next fiscal year. It's been a good program. It has.
We've, we've done this in past years.
We, we have not done Down Payment Assistance.
Oh, okay.
Um, we, we have done a, a Housing Rehab program, but that is at least 10 years ago we did that. Yeah, this, the notion just comes up as far as, uh, mainly being an attraction for, uh, you know, not just the low-to-moderate-income folks, but young families, you know, as far as getting young families in a house.
And sometimes it, it ends up affecting, you know, that one house that needs some siding and, and roof and stuff. And even one house in the neighborhood can help bring it up, and it's supposed to help with the tax base.
So if you had, let's say we sign up for one, and if there was two that would come up, is that an issue, or is that?
Only if it got to be that I didn't have any applications from anybody else with, with the participating communities, then I could ask for an amendment to, to, uh, the grant program and say, okay, we're going to do two in Lakeview. We have had it, a couple programs ago, we had it where, uh, we had one community that had, you know, somebody willing, wanting to participate, and we weren't hearing from anybody else. So I just contacted all the cities and said, do you mind if we go ahead and give this last project to this city?
So what's the maximum that this could, that we would be responsible for?
Yeah, it would be $2,500.
$2,500 per project. So if you said that you wanted to do four, maximum four projects, there's a potential of, uh, the $10,000. You would not be charged 10,000 unless you had four complete projects.
Now, is this a annual application?
Mm-hmm. It has been so far, yes.
But what is our, what is our, our average?
I guess, I couldn't tell you.
Yeah, well, I'm thinking, it's got to be close to 110.
Well, the lake, of course, skews everything, so we kind of look at everything as lake property, and then kind of town property, being two separate things.
You probably know more than, I mean, what the average, most, you know, in Lakeview, I would say. I would say close to 110.
75 to 150.
Right.
Average, I don't know. I'd have no idea.
Yeah, well, I mean, just the value. Well, yeah, too high.
But I, I guess if this is something that the council would have any interest in, I, I would suggest a couple things. That, that we not look at an individual application that we write along on Region 12's. And it is a annual application, so you could start off with, with one project.
Mm-hmm.
You know, start off with one or two and see how things go.
How do you go about creating interest in this? Do you advertise it, or how do, I mean, just, is that something that Region 12 puts out, or?
Right. Region 12 as administrator, and actually what they would do is make Region 12 sub-recipient. What, if, if, uh, it'd be Region 12's application, so everything would be in Region 12's name. We would make sure we do all the marketing. Uh, we meet with all the banks and the realtors to make sure that they're onboard with how the program is. Because really, that's our best, best, uh, uh, marketing is our bankers and our realtors.
So Nancy Mobauer gets involved in these projects, then?
Yeah, yeah. Yep. She's, uh, she's one of the inspectors. Carla's the other one.
Mm-hmm.
Carla does more half-administration and half, uh, inspection.
Okay.
And Nancy just does inspections. But yeah, it would be Nancy that most likely that would be doing the inspections, and Carla doing the administration of it.
So if we want to do this, the council would have to have you prepare a resolution?
We have to decide on how many projects?
Yeah.
And if you want to check, like Manning's been the most successful. In fact, they, they have done five projects so far this year, and they're going to do one on their own next year. So, so, you know, they've been, they've been just grabbing, grabbing up the projects left and right. You could ask Dawn, uh, about how it works with them, if you want to get a little bit more information. Like I said, if I have the resolution by, after your next meeting, that's perfectly fine.
Okay.
So I'll take a look at that and find out a little bit more about it? Well, we, we'd have to have the resolution drawn up by next meeting, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm sure I'll have something prepared, and we'll just consider it next time.
And I have a form that if you need one, Scott, otherwise you can pull up your own.
You can, you can email me that resolution.
I will. It just has a blank, we'll do up to X number, you know, and the city fills it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you can bring that next meeting, but we leave out blank how many we want to do then, we'll decide.
Sure. It, you know, it, we'll decide whether you want to-
Right.
Do it at all. It's, you know, the funds aren't budgeted, but-
But if it-
We would have some funds available.
You could talk to the realtors, too. Is there a realtor in the house?
Uh, no.
Okay. You could talk to the realtors and see what kind of interest there has been, you know, also. And if they say that they've gotten inquiries, or you know, then you might want to do three, up to three or four. It's, yeah, like you said, up to six.
You know, I, I, it just seems like we have a unique situation here that, you know, we don't necessarily have housing, uh, a lot of housing units on the market at any time. We just really don't.
Yeah, what, I, I guess my question would be, you know, what's the average, um, house that's on the market right now? What's that?
Any ideas?
Price range?
150 of the one at the park, right?
Yeah, that's right.
So yeah, it'd be neat to get those, nice to get those kind of figures if, if they could come up with something like that, and how many houses are on the market, I guess.
And generally, what we've found is with the rehab, because even if we put in $20,000 in repairs, you know, the appraisal isn't going to raise the value by 20,000. It's more like 25 to 50 cents on the dollar. So the average increase is anywhere from 5,000 to $10,000 after rehab value. So if you see the value at, you know, 95,000, and, and it's pretty, pretty easy to still keep under that 110.
So, so on the rehab, we're just talking about, you know, the cost to rehab the house-
Mm-hmm.
Before they move in, or?
Actually after. We, we help them buy the house, and then once they get settled in, then we work with the home, homeowner now, and, uh, set up a time for contractor walkthrough and take bids. We have to go through federal procurement.
Okay.
But they can move into their house unless it, you know, uh, the inspector thinks that it's not a safe, you know, environment because of the lead-based paint. But we haven't seen two, any of those yet.
You know, I've, I've worked with this once, and it, it works well for people. I think for a lot of people, they just don't know about this program.
Mm-hmm. I mean, you know, as a general rule, we have smaller programs. Most of them are mostly low-interest loans. And there's been several people in Sack County that have taken advantage of the low-interest loans. But a grant definitely is a little bit better. The, uh, forgivable term depends on, um, how much the, uh, after rehab value is and the amount of, of down payment. Even if we put $30,000 into a home, doesn't mean that they have a $30,000 forgivable lien. But if it's, uh, um, under 15,000, it's a five-year forgivable lien. And if it's over 15,000, then it's a 10-year forgivable lien.
So you guys want to, we would have to entertain a motion for you to draw up a resolution?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll have some stuff ready for next time, and I'll do a little more housing market research, and I'll have, answer those questions for you, and-
You can take some of those to your bankers, or, you know, realtors, and see what they think, too.
Sure.
All right?
I talked with Palmer State Bank, and they had thought, you know, they'd worked with it before.
Mm-hmm.
Good.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions come up, please give us a call.
Okay.
Great, yeah, thanks for coming.
You know what? I'm sitting here, and I'm listening to Gus's thing, and this song keeps coming into my head. We all live in a- Thinking I'm in a submarine or something.
Hello there, Gus.
We're blowing bubbles.
Yeah, it just keeps going in and out on me.
Yeah, I think that's, it's your internet connection back there.
It's, well, it's got a weak signal, and I got that booster on it.
Yeah.
It just, as the meeting went on, it just kept getting weaker and weaker and weaker.
We could hear you okay now, though.
Yeah? Well, I'll, I'll just look at the, I got everything in front of me here on the council deal, and so.
Okay.
So I'll just do it on the phone.
Well, we're, we're just going to, we'll get some more information about housing market stuff in, in town. We'll reconsider this, uh, housing grant at the next meeting.
Okay. All right, sounds good.
I'm kind of curious, is there any properties that could take real advantage of this around here that, you know, that could? That's, you know, your mark, some of- Well, like she said, sometimes it, uh, you, you know, fits up a how, you know, and makes, uh, other ones on the block work more.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if you had someone that-
When we did that rehab grant 10 years ago, I'm going to tell you, we had six or eight projects or something like that. We had a tough time selling that with that many projects. But after a while, it got going, and you end up with some real improvements to areas. But in that case, a couple of the projects were out around the lake, and maybe you couldn't really tell if they were improvements, but, um-
Of course, you're dealing with the, shouldn't say, but you're dealing with the government, you know?
Oh, you're dealing with the government. It's, it's a, um, you know, heavy, heavy on the administration side of things.
I remember what was that, FHA loans years ago, I know, uh, that, that was real big. You know, for, I know different people that had, uh, you know, just certain little things that they had to do was just, you know, kind of out of the world, you know?
But if, if we did this, and the person got their Down Payment Assistance and got in the house, and then, say it's Nancy, comes into the house and inventories everything, and says, there's this that needs to be fixed, and these things that need to be fixed in order to bring everything up to standard. So based off that inspection, Region 12 writes specs for a project, and then they take it to bid. So it, like I say, it's pretty intensive on the government administration side of things, but-
And since this isn't a budgeted item, it'd be nice to know what, um, you know, with our pool of money that's available, you know, what we can comfortably do, you know, without-
Sure, yeah.
Um, taking a whole lot out of, out of our slush fund that-
I wouldn't suggest that we jump too far into this thing.
Yeah.
Really. If you decide you want to participate-
If it's not a budgeted item, I guess that's what I want.
It should be for one or two projects.
Yeah.
You know, is my thinking.
That'd be about 5,000.
Two, two projects would be 5,000 if two are funded, yes.
It's always nice to start with one.
Well, yeah, whatever, you know?
All right, there.
Is this something that they brought to you, or vice versa?
You know, they, they send out a notice, and then we talked about it, and asked her to come speak.
So the advantage to the city, if you chose to do this, would be?
People.
All, well, people, and just all of the general advantages of homeownership, more stability, yeah.
But so this is just a, a city investment, then, kind of?
No, 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 not necessarily. It's, it's the advan-, the community advantages of homeownership, and it, and it deals with stable families, and, you know, those type-
So you, you don't feel like that money could come back, go through some other avenues?
Um, you could think that taxes go up a little bit, but it-
Property values increase.
Property values increase.
So really, this is kind of a benevolent thing that the city would be doing for a family?
You know, you know, yes or no. But, uh, the benefit really is either you're helping out a low-income, uh, situation, or what the real hope would be was that you're helping, helping out a young family, bringing another young family down.
If they own the home, they're a lot more inclined to keep it up than if they rent the place.
Well, then more inclined to stay, but-
Right.
In the, in the area, yeah.
Yep.
It just came up as a, when we did a planning session, that everybody felt that, not everybody, that most of us would like to see more homeowners.
Yeah. Not that I personally feel this way, but I can just hear people saying, well, how come they're not giving me $2,500? You know what I'm saying?
Because they didn't apply.
And we don't have anywhere to put new homes, now we don't have a subdivision that we could, like, this was out here. So that, that's how this all started, so that's where we're trying to go. Okay, we'll go to ordinance 469. Stu, did you have something you want to talk about, about that?
Sure. Yeah, I bring it up every time we, we discuss it, so. Here we go again.
I've seen that map before.
You betcha. And the red is explicitly written in the ordinance where snowmobiles are not allowed. Yellow is designated snowmobile trails. And, uh, once again, I ask, uh, um, is there any benefit or detriment of not allowing snowmobiles on, uh, 9th Street?
Hey, Gus.
Yeah, I got a different phone. That thing went, lost it on that one.
Yep, yeah, okay. Uh, we're, we're talking about the ATV ordinance now.
Okay.
Stu Bones talking a little bit about, uh, oh, yeah-
Snowmobiles are not allowed on- Snowmobiles are not allowed on Ninth Street.
Well, I read through all that stuff and man, there's a lot of rules and regulations.
Oh, yeah, but...
So, and it's been this way for, you know, a great many years. So, I don't know if, you know, when it was enacted, when it was asked, you know, if there was a certain reason why they were not allowed on Ninth Street or if there was any benefit of not, not having them up there or not.
I don't know the answer, but...
Obviously, businesses has changed up there, uh...
All I know is, uh, they're not on Ninth Street. They're about thirty feet off my house down my alley.
So, do, do they pay attention to the route and come down the alley?
Yeah, most of them do. And I think it's more dangerous than going down Ninth Street because they shoot out, they shoot out across over into the car wash area and there's traffic coming around the corner and up the street rather than straight across. Personally, I think it'd be safer to be on Ninth Street myself.
What's, what's on Ninth Street?
Highway.
Well, I mean, in this particular section right here, what all do we have?
You know, it's, it's the once more store and grocery store.
Okay. Oh, okay, up and down, yeah.
Instead, they drop over half a block and come down the alley. Like you said, they shoot right out the street and traffic coming out the highway. It's really dangerous. It actually is.
That, right around there is the, is the crossover though. They go down the north side of the viaduct.
The viaduct, yeah.
Okay. But they come in, of course, on the south side of the road there by school.
But there's no, I guess why I'm asking, and I'm trying to picture this in my mind, there's no grassy area except for going underneath the...
Might have got changed years ago when, say, Shadens was up there with the cafe, with people.
Yeah, yeah. There used to be a lot of businesses up there, grocery store.
Right.
Shadens.
Right.
Used to be a lot more businesses where people would be parking in that area and now they're not.
So, but that's the ordinance that's in force right now, so what, what, what you're asking is, is to eliminate that.
Yeah, just eliminate the wording that disallows the snowmobiles on Ninth Street.
And what you're saying, Jerry, is that, you know, it's really kind of more dangerous to go through the alleyway.
Well, actually, they come, like you said, they come down, especially going east. They come down the alley. I don't, I mean, I hear the noise, but it doesn't bother me. But I mean, they come down the alley and like Scott said, that route comes out of the alley and then goes down the north side and then, on the overpass or the viaduct. So, that means that they come out, you got a curve coming around off the highway. These people have to shoot across and go actually at an angle
Yeah.
to go down the north side of that viaduct. And they come down Ninth Street, they can, they can go straight on, straight on through.
Yeah.
That's the way I would do it, you know?
Has the police ever given anybody a ticket for not doing it?
No, not that I know of. I know, I know, I know Deb Shadens put up, put up snow fences because they used to shoot across the front or, or shoot across the front yard to cut over, cut across
Yeah.
the, the highway. But it is, it is dangerous that way, to be honest with you.
Which way's dangerous?
Um, that being on Ninth.
Well, it, it's safer to go down the, straight, straight, straight down Ninth.
Straight across where the...
And, and go down the north side of viaduct, go down the highway.
Like, both, whether the, then they have to come and go over the viaduct, right?
They go down, well, they go down the...
They'd still have to go on the north side.
They go down the north side and they're by Brian, uh, what's his name? Brian Barnes, no, Curtis.
Curtis.
Yeah, they go down the north side of his side.
Right, yeah, I've seen the trail. I mean, they just, if they can't go up the, right up the viaduct, it's normal.
No, uh-uh, no.
That's what I thought you said, yeah.
What was the reason why they cut it off though? But they...
Cut it off.
In that you couldn't use that.
I would say...
That was my question to you.
I think, I think mainly because there was...
Well, Jerry's the only one that was on the council.
Yeah, that's right.
Mainly because like Scott said, there were businesses up there and they were, they, you know, they were concerned about traffic and businesses, but...
Well, it used to be the building, you know, Shadens Gas Station Cafe.
Yeah.
The motel, the, the other side at the grocery store and another business on that side too.
Real state.
So, it's, uh, pretty busy up there.
I could, I could see where it'd be...
Making a state like, met like that would, would indicate, well, we disallow them on Main Street as well, just for that, you know, purpose. But that, so that's not really the case on Ninth Street anymore.
Yeah.
So, as you look at the ordinance, it's, uh, it's on page eleven, that it's in there. Now, it's not, the way this ordinance is written, it wouldn't propose any changes to the snowmobile, uh, portion. It's, the ordinance is just written to rewrite the entire chapter for numbering purposes and whatnot. Okay? But it, you know, it is, we would just simply take out B.
We have to re, redo the ordinance and go back and do it three times?
No, you just, you're gonna prove it tonight. We take out B, approve the second reading tonight and we still approve the third reading next time. Now, when I say B though, Dave, it's just this.
Right.
It's just Ninth Street.
Oh, I'm sorry, gotcha.
Little B.
Just little B, not the big B.
Right.
Get your eraser.
Okay, I can't erase this thing, so you're gonna have to wait till next time. No. All right. But I mean, that, that just makes sense to me anyway.
Well, yeah, it's inconvenient for people that live in the alley too, for that.
Okay, so...
It, this wouldn't prohibit them from going down the alley.
Oh, no.
Right. I mean, they'll, they'll still be able to go down the alley if that's what they choose, so.
Which, you know, the practical side of thing is that there's likely snow in the alley when there probably is not on the street.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. Be relaxed about that. I don't make too much noise.
So, so what we need is a motion to approve the ordinance with the, um, change of taking out one B.
Right.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I would make that a motion.
Did you have a second?
I'll send it.
Rule call.
Okay, Wolton.
Yes.
Us. Thank you.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Cleveland.
Yes.
So, that's second reading and we'll do third reading then next time.
And the third reading we do, just won't even have it in there.
Right, right, yep.
C will become B and D will become C and so forth and so forth.
Yeah, absolutely.
On my paper.
Yeah.
Thanks, Stu.
Yeah.
The, uh, area between the two piers, is that designated as a park?
It is.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, I see that...
For your ATV.
I see that practically speaking, it, uh, seems to be used a lot down there, but it's not supposed to be.
For snowmobiles or ATVs?
Would be both.
I see ATV tracks, uh, snowmobile tracks on there now.
The way I read the ordinance was between the piers was was acceptable for snowmobiles to, uh, to ride there. Or... Cause I think it said explicitly Speaker Park and Camp Crescent. Didn't say a park in general. So, that's why I asked about the, uh, between the piers.
Is that, is that number four?
It's, yeah, I mean, there's this statement about the snowmobiles should not be operated in any park, playground or upon any other city-owned property without the express permission of the city.
Same on page thirteen under H. It says it can't be in any park.
Yeah, and then, so, yeah, on page thirteen, you're starting to talk about the ATV parts. Page twelve is still talking about...
A live area preserved.
Parks are the same as...
Yeah, that's underneath your ATVs, but not snowmobiles. I'm sorry if I'm making you guys read your ordinance.
No, that's all right.
I say, but it's in there. I mean, there's a prohibition against operations in parks.
Right. I guess that's the way I look at it.
ATVs are snowmobiles.
Snowmobiles, right on the floor, this is page twelve, isn't it?
Awesome.
Yeah, right here, yeah. Shall not be operated on.
Parks in other city land.
I mean, it...
It's in there.
We don't have permission, so.
Yeah, I, there is, I guess there hasn't been any permission granted on anything.
Cool. Dave, we'll move on to the water tower.
Really wanted to discuss the paint design on the water tower. Uh, just a little update on, uh, preparation of plans and specs. I would tell you, this is pretty complex, a lot more so than maybe you had thought. And there's many different types of coatings and we continue to work through, through those. Just some concern on that, that one of these last projects from other communities that was engineered, they had the, uh, the engineer basically bid out three different types of coatings that have different types of, of, uh, number of years of life expectancy. And then they figure out the annual cost per year on that. And they ended up then taking a more expensive option, which would have been, uh, cheaper over the long run though because it had longer life expectancy. We'd have trouble doing anything like that. You know, if we were gonna bid this thing, it'd be black and white, that we would, would bid this one spec. But we'll continue to plug away on that and see, see what we come up with and make sure we feel comfortable with that. But what I wanted to talk with you tonight though about is mainly paint scheme. And that's on page sixteen is the pictures. And you see what ours, uh, what ours looked like on the bottom there. The suggestion would be, you know, should we paint the bottom of it uh, more of a darker blue? Paint the, the column dark blue and then also the underside of the bowl, maybe a darker blue. Cause as you look at the underside of the white bowl, the stuff that looks dirty up there is mold and mild, and milded. Okay? And it continues to get worse until you would clean it. And we've had that cleaned, um, once or twice since, uh, over the past fifteen years. And, uh, you know, the suggestion would be something like what Sack City did up at the top photograph. To paint the column a darker blue and extend the dark blue up into the bottom of the bowl. And if you look at, at the picture, you can really see a weld seam in there about where the, where it gets less dirty. And that would be a suggested point that you would go up to to paint that, this darker blue. Just wondering what's your, what's your thoughts are on that? If we look at a dark blue, that is the same color as the Lakeview logo.
But the Sack Tower's always, I've known, we, Joy and I have talked about that many times. That don't look, uh, it, you can see it's really dirty and mold, mildewy too or whatever, so I don't know, you know, it just...
On the blue parts?
Yeah, just, if you just notice that, I mean, it's, uh...
It does, it, it does not inhibit mold growth at all. Again, that's true.
No.
You're just hiding it.
Yeah, right.
It might not be sodum.
Oh, you don't think? You ever noticed it?
The blue?
No. Oh, you mean, if we did that with those hours, that could be. I don't know. But we have noticed that inside coming up to, it didn't look, uh...
I guess I've, I, not noticed that, but...
Yeah, I would, I...
And paid it too much attention.
Probably should look.
I don't know why we did, we did, you know? We have talked about that.
I don't think there's anything wrong with changing the paint scheme. What's, change is good.
It doesn't cost anymore, does it?
No.
Okay. Uh, if you were to mess with the logo, it's very expensive. Ends up being thousands of dollars to redo the logo.
Oh, but we're not talking about messing with the logo though, are we?
Um, if you would look at just doing the bottom part of the bowl in a different color, it wouldn't be that much more.
That much or?
Well, I kind of like the, you know, the logo anyway. I think it...
I do too. You know, that is our logo, we...
Right. So, could you, like, make the specs, whether we keep it the same white or blue? I mean, not that much more, I guess, I believe, kind of bagger.
I hate to tell you that it's no more, but it's not gonna be much of anything more. That's, there is no, yeah, there is no, uh, extra cost like there would be for the logo, you know?
Right, okay.
I think if you put that dark blue like that on the bottom and then you leave your Lakeview like it is, I think that'll stand out even more than...
Yeah, me too.
It'd be nice.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's what I think. I don't know, I think that'll...
Well, I definitely like that.
With the blue and red.
Yep, I, I think that'll bring out Lakeview even more. I think it'd look really good if I was living across the road from the water tower or something.
If we had something, if the marijuana job, we just have to pay it with a brush.
It's over ten feet high.
There goes retirement.
We just find you a full-time job for all that.
I'll be.
Not me.
Couple of cans, a cup of drywall and...
There you go.
Rustoleum.
Yeah, yeah.
Talked about that last meeting. How bigger the duck?
Funny that nothing does get...
Pardon me?
Get the mold on, why the mildew on them like that? It's funny they do. I know they all do.
Yeah, and that's, but, like, especially like on Sacks, it, they, they sweat all the time, but then it comes down to the part where, to the drip line. And that's where the mold would really start, uh, excuse me, the mold and mold would start to grow. Where it, uh, where it's wet all the time. Good. Well, we'll look at a blue column and, uh, the blue bi, bottom portion of the bowl would be, would be blue also. We'll keep plugging away at it.
About the administrative reports.
Yeah, several, several things for you. The first thing was on your, at your seat here tonight. That, that thing, but the backside is, is the picture.
Stu, do you want one of these to look at? Okay. It's interesting stuff.
Yeah, just, uh, let's look at the, kind of the verbiage first. This, uh, first of all, we're getting together with the DNR to start discussions on this Canada goose thing. And, uh, so we'll be meeting with them on Thursday, but they've started to send me some information about this. And this is just an excerpt from the Iowa DNR's, uh, goose management plan. And the, uh, that bottom paragraph really describes that, you know, that, that reducing the, the geese in urban areas, they say would involve the combination of those five items. So, there's several things there that would be, would be considered. And I can tell you, just about tell you, that one thing they will really try to get us to do is to, is number two, about growing some taller vegetation right on the shoreline. We historically have not allowed that. You know, we keep that manicured through there.
Yeah.
And keep it looking really nice.
Wouldn't that be better?
No, they don't like tall grass. They think there's a fox hidden in there.
See, they, they like the areas that are, that are mown down and they can see what's going on.
I see.
So, just, I'm, I'm sure that will come up as a suggestion.
I have two girls that would volunteer to be part of number one.
All right, the harassment. Yes. Uh, and then, of course, number five talks about education, a lot of stuff about public education, about don't feed the geese, that type of stuff. But number four talks about population control. There's, talks about that egg oiling, you can find in all of the, the, uh, nesting, oiling the eggs.
That'd be time-consuming.
But, but then the other one dealing with hunting. So, the backside is the picture.
I don't think we really have a problem with people feeding the geese, really.
Oh, we used to.
Yeah, you know, I, I don't know if it's as much anymore or not, but... Yeah, you know, I, I don't know if it's as much anymore or not, but-
I think that's kind of what started.
Ducks, they feed the ducks, yeah. So the picture is, uh, is the state law. This state law on, uh, hunting within two hundred yards of a, of an occupied structure. So, as you look at the red, what that really is, is a little red circle around each one of these homes to be at a two hundred yard radius. So anything red would, you know, not, you'd not be able to, to hunt inside that two hundred yards, so. We need to learn more about that as far as still, so we have some open areas of water, whether, whether we can hunt from the water. Or, uh, yeah, there's a little tip of Crescent Beach, it looks like, that is outside the red. And could potentially be a, um, a hunting area within, within the bounds of state law. So, this is just FYI, and just know that we're meeting with them on, on Thursday and, and see what comes of it, but- Pardon me?
One time.
And they'll be here at one o'clock.
Who's got it, DNR?
DNR, so the, the local wildlife guy is Clint, Clint Maddox. And then the the goose guy, depredation specialist or something like that, is Maury from, uh, Spirit Lake area. So he's coming down.
I got a real problem.
I, we've, I work for the DNR, I'm the goose guy. I'll make a TV show out of it or something.
Well, yeah, you'd think so.
Reality.
Yeah, reality, you know.
This is just an update too. Here's some issues on summer employment, some summer applicants and, you know, my point to you here is that we don't have applicants to fill all of the positions. Because you look at Ruth there, of course, at the top, we have these seven and a half month parks workers and that's what Mike Mitchell is, and then Mike Norris would have been the other one.
He's not there, he's not coming?
He has, Mike's taken the job out of you, actually.
Oh?
So. That, uh, spot is open. We need to find, find someone.
That's the only one we have open then? The rest were filled?
Well, we'll talk through this here quick, but, um, now, after I, after I, uh, made this list out, Mike's boy Jake had turned in an application. And we need to talk through that. Assistant manager, of course Nancy, now on campground attendance. Jack and Shannon have several years' experience under their belt, but then, uh, we had a couple of other people from last year who did not reapply. So, we had two more campground attendants last year. Uh, we need at least one more. So you'd see the applicants there.
How old these people have to be?
They have to be like fourteen, but we prefer that they be adults. You know, interacting with campers, but- So you can see our three additional applicants there. They're all, they're all three young folks. Mini golf Andrea worked for us last year. She did a real nice job. Utility floaters, says, uh, hiring two, and that would be two returning ones, Matt for public works, Cameron Newell for, uh, for electric department. With my only caution to you is that Cameron, uh, really wants to find a job in his field, it's law enforcement. So, we know that if he would find a law enforcement job, you know, he'd be certainly going that way instead. Uh, summer parks worker, we usually get one. Jamie worked there last year. So, the issues would be that seven and a half month park worker and then whatever we would want to do with campground attendant. Uh, we'll continue to take applications on that part, seven and a half month parks worker guy. And particularly if you have any suggestions about people that we could contact.
So, like campground attendants, we need to hire how many of these?
At least one.
At least one of these five applicants?
Excuse me, you'd hire Jack and Shannon and then at least one of the other two, one of the other three.
Got you. And then the mini golf?
It's just one.
Hire one of those three?
Yep.
Then utility floaters, two of the four?
Yeah, unless, you know, you, uh, recall the lawn said, boy, you sure could keep another floater busy. I need to talk to, uh, Manny, Manana, Mangana? That he's, uh, John Smith's, John Connys, uh, foster, foster child, I think, right?
Yeah.
You need to be eighteen years old to be a floater, so I just need to confirm that he's a senior now. Anyway, we'll continue to take some applications and have stuff ready for the next council meeting. Uh, good, good news on our electric apprenticeship programs. Both of our guys have, have been steadily working through all of their testings. And actually, there is a four-year program. Both of them have finished testing on all four years of the, of the program. Brian is scheduled to go take his final exam on the thirteenth. And then at some point after that, then Jeff could do it, because remember, we can only have one apprentice and officially in the program at a time. So, but that's, uh, very positive. They've, they've been working on that a lot this winter time, when the we- when the weather's been so bad, they've been working on that and taking, taking the tests. Now's the time of year when we do performance evaluations and those are being done for staff. And I'd look to have my performance evaluation, I don't know if it'll be at the next council meeting or not, I gotta get a special, um, performance evaluation, type of a program in order to retain my credential with the City Management Association. So it's a different type of, of an evaluation. It's actually a three sixty evaluation, getting evaluated by staff and, and other people then too, so. That'll be a much more intensive, uh, process this time. And, uh, Sack County League meeting is a week from Thursday, March twelfth. It's in Letton. I don't know who's catering. It's at the church, you know, that Friendship Center.
Then you just need head count, right?
Yep, we need a head count by-
We'll go.
Let you know next.
Is next Thursday?
Next Thursday.
This Thursday, but next?
Twelve, right?
Yep.
I'll probably go. I gotta go to Chicago on Monday, Monday, so I should be there. Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I'm strictly, strictly-